Good evening and I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for March 2nd, 2020, and call upon Councilmember David Jones.
Thank you. If you would please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristen Rush, if you'll do a roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Proton Miller.
I am here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer. Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Very good, I would, Mr. Jones?
I'd like to move to excuse Councilmember Bob Pfeiffer for tonight's business meeting.
Mr. Pfeiffer advised me that he is suffering illness and so he is excused on a six to zero vote. I would encourage everyone who is ill to stay home and wash your hands. Okay, next we have the approval of the minutes of January 27th, 2020. Any changes or corrections also for February 3rd, 2020? I see no lights indicating a request to change. They will stand approved as presented. Next, it's our distinct honor and privilege tonight to recognize Mr. Jim Sullivan. Jim, if you and your wife, Dr. Mary Dane, would like to come down to the podium? I know all these people are here for you tonight. If you'd like to have your wife join you, that's fine, or if she wants to take a picture or whatever. You know what? That's usually the way Jim is too. You know, let's just, let me stand off to the side. This, Jim's a very special person, and let me tell you why. For forty years, Jim Sullivan has served the City of Arvada's Public Works and Utility Department. He has announced his plan to retire on March 4th of this year, and the March 2nd meeting will be his last city council meeting, and he is jumping for joy. But we will have a little get-together with city employees in the atrium coming this Wednesday at nine o'clock, and so it'll be another opportunity to recognize a man who has done much for the city. Jim was hired on February 11th, 1980, as a Civil Engineer II and was promoted to Civil Engineer III two years later. On November 18th of 96, he was promoted to Utilities Manager. In early 2009, Mr. Sullivan was promoted to Deputy Director of Public Works/City Engineering, which has had several title changes over the years. He served as Deputy Director of Public Works and Deputy Director of Utilities when Public Works and Utilities were one department. On July 30th, 2011, Jim was promoted to Director of Utilities. Mr. Sullivan embodies the principles of servant leadership. Throughout his career, he placed the success of his team members and the organization first. Mr. Sullivan set a vision of excellence for the Utilities Department, and he never wavered from this vision. His trust in his managers gave them the freedom to envision the future of the department and the confidence to build that future. Some of the Utility Department's accomplishments under his leadership include, by 2020, there will be no cast-iron water mains in the city's system, and the entire sanitary sewer system will be PVC or PVC-lined pipes. The Department's sound water maintenance and metering practices resulted in system water loss of less than 5%, far better than the industry benchmark of 16%. His sound fiscal management will allow the city to cash fund our contribution to the gross reservoir expansion, securing the water needs for the entire future of Arvada. He guided the Utilities and Public Works Department to achieve APWA accreditation, the fifth organization to be accredited in Colorado. When you ask his team members about Jim, what shines through is his character and the admiration they hold for him. When Cliff Deeds, longtime colleague of Mr. Sullivan, was asked for his thoughts about Mr. Sullivan, he simply stated, "Jim is just the best person. He is a leader, a thinker, a doer, and a high-performing teammate. Jim can perform at the tactical level when needed and bring strategic thinking to the city's leadership team every day. Jim is a friend to many and a true role model for all of the city. Mr. Sullivan's belief in his team members, his thoughtful and innovative leadership will continue to be felt by the city and our community for many, many years to come. The Arvada City Council, City of Arvada team members, and the Arvada community members salute Jim Sullivan for his forty years of service to the City of Arvada. Jim, thank you." Now, do you have a presentation on water rates you want to make?
I could probably whip one up if you really wanted. Thank you very much, Mark, and Council, and actually, everybody. It's just been a wonderful time. I think they say forty years isn't nearly enough time to spend in one place, but if you're going to spend it, City of Arvada would be the place. It's a great and wonderful community. Thank you.
Well, and you've added a lot to it. Thank you.
Alright, sir.
Okay, next we have a presentation from the Moore Middle School Water Quality Project. Last time you were going to present, they got snowed out, right? Yes, so the weather's better today. That's good. Go ahead.
Hello, thank you for listening to our presentation tonight. We are sixth-grade students at Moore Middle School. My name is Genevieve Robertson.
My name is Drew Charles.
My name is Nikki Cabral.
And my name is Walker Munoz.
We would like to present to you what we have learned about the problem at Lake Arbor and how we plan to fix it.
Before we continue, we think it is important that you know the history of Lake Arbor. Lake Arbor is a man-made lake made in 1971. This lake's property is sixty square acres in total. Also, the original purpose of Lake Arbor was to catch runoff stormwater from the streets. Lake Arbor is located on North Lamar Street and is also located near Little Dry Creek Park and Far Horizon Park. We found that the lake is full of blue-green algae. This has harmed and has even killed multiple dogs that have swam and drank from it. We need to do something about it. Lastly, it is stopping recreational activity, and we are the cause of this problem.
Moore Middle School's involvement. If you have watched the news or read newspapers during the summer, two eighth graders warned a couple about the deadly blue-and-green algae and how it is a danger to their duck. On November 6th, we went on a field trip to Lake Arbor to get some water samples, and then we tested the samples in class. Aside from that, let's talk about these bullet points. Many of the students in Moore live in the community surrounding Lake Arbor, and since I take the bus, I have to pass Lake Arbor literally every single day. The second bullet point talks about a student coming to Moore and asking if we could do something about the lake to fix it or at least help it out. The last bullet point I've already explained, and it is that two eighth graders at Lake Arbor alerted a couple about the recent duck deaths caused by the deadly bacteria called blue-green algae. Thank you for listening.
We went into action and went on a field trip at Lake Arbor, which wasn't very far from Moore. We took notes and discussed observations about Lake Arbor's ecosystem and the types of plants and animals we saw in the water. We learned about tools that help you determine the water quality of Lake Arbor, then we gathered some water samples to test for phosphorus, nitrates, and pH levels back at the lab.
In class, we went back and revisited Lake Arbor's water. We used the Flynn Scientific Freshwater Testing Kit to do so. We tested for phosphates, nitrates, and pH. We did this by dropping a tablet for each vial, then we shook to dissolve the tablet and waited for the designated amount of time. Then we compared the color of the test chart for phosphate, nitrates, and pH. Results: From the Lake Arbor water samples, we found that nitrate levels were five parts per million. This is normal as it is less than fifty parts per million. The results we found for pH, which was seven, is normal as it is within normal pH levels of 6.5 to 8.5. However, what we found from phosphate was unusual. After testing, we found that four parts per million was the common finding. This number is high as normal levels of phosphate are 5,000ths to 500ths parts per million. We also had the sample professionally tested and found out that the samples had a range of 6 hundredths to 19 tenths. Therefore, we concluded is that phosphates are causing the problem at Lake Arbor.
From our results, we concluded that excess phosphates are causing the blue-and-green algae at Lake Arbor. We researched what could be causing this high level of phosphates and found out that it could be coming from fertilizers and stormwater. This is important to the ecosystem at Lake Arbor because these low oxygen levels can cause, because not only can algae blooms be toxic, they can also deplete oxygen levels. These low oxygen levels can cause fish to die and then will affect the birds surrounding the ecosystem at Lake Arbor. In class, we looked at three possible solutions. The first solution we looked at was biochar, which is activated charcoal that absorbs phosphorus and nitrates. The second solution we looked at was a carp trap, which catches algae-causing fish and turns them into fertilizer. Finally, we looked at floating wetlands, which are floating islands of plants that absorb excess nutrients like phosphates. After looking at all three possible solutions, Moore Middle School's sixth graders decided that floating wetlands would be the best solution because of the natural environment and also because it is the most cost-effective. If this solution continues to work at Lake Arbor, we can apply this solution to other lakes around the area.
Moore Middle School would like to pose a three-year plan with the overall goal of creating a better ecosystem for the communities surrounding Lake Arbor. In the first year, we'd like to build floating wetlands and normal wetlands to decrease the phosphate levels and decrease algal growth. In the second year, we would like to test the nutrients contained to see if the wetlands are making a difference. We would then like the opportunity to revisit and revise our design. In the third year, we'd like to ensure the health of Lake Arbor by restocking fish and buying healthy wetlands, floating or normal. Not only would this help create a better ecosystem, but it'd help answer important scientific questions like, do floating wetlands significantly decrease phosphate levels? And are floating wetlands a viable solution for suburban areas with algae growth problems? Floating wetland efficiency. In scientific studies, floating wetlands have been proven to decrease phosphates at a rate of 1.48 milligrams per meter per day and can decrease total phosphorus by 53% when the floating wetland only covers 5% of the total body of water. The types of plants that have been most effective are native wetland plants such as cattails, reeds, and sedges. The type of soil typically used in floating wetlands is peat.
We would like to ask for $10,000 to build the floating wetlands and buy these items and possibly more to build it, reducing phosphorus and algae. We would use this money to buy the following items and more to build it. We already have $1,000 given generously from Astir Credit Union. We would also like to add normal wetland plants to the shorelines like cattails and Moore to further decrease phosphates. In April, we can have a more definite design plan if you would like to see. We are also considering the possibility of buying pre-made floating wetland mats as to increase efficiency with a goal to buy a total of eight 10-foot-by-10-foot mats. Here's a short clip about how floating wetlands are built. Could you move forward to one minute and 18 seconds, please?
The base of the wetland is constructed of three 2-inch layers of polyfluoro- biological filter material. This can be purchased in 90-foot rolls. A utility knife with a long blade used to cut the filter material. A long, thin-bladed knife. Twenty-one-inch zip ties. A drill with a two-inch hole saw attachment. Half-inch PVC pipe and fittings for optional water fowl fence. A plastic drop cloth. Two-part marine flotation foam. Starting with a roll of filter material, cut three 10-foot lengths. Layer two sheets of filter material on top of each other. Using the knife, poke a hole in each corner and insert a zip tie to join the filter sheets together.
This is an example of what we would be doing to make the wetland mats and what they would look like. You can stop the video. Before we have time for questions, we would like to thank, okay, we would like to thank everyone that's helped. The names are not showing up right now, but like, all people who donated money to the problem or like, just helped us with the field trip and stuff.
We would now like to hear any questions.
Okay, I'll open up for city council questions or action. Ms. Ford?
Well, I just wanted to thank you all for your wonderful presentation, and I think this is a fantastic study that you've been involved in, and I appreciate those who led this, and this is a great learning tool. It's in solving actual problems, so I appreciate you all for being a part of this.
Thank you.
I guess my question for the city manager is, aren't we having some discussion about dredging Lake Arbor or not?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, we are working on a project to, and coming to you with a plan to fund it soon, that would dredge the entire lake.
And would, could this be incorporated as a component of that, or what's the?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so, why don't we direct our city team to look at how to incorporate what you all are talking about doing into the dredging operations, because there's a lot of silt that's in Lake Arbor right now. It seems to me that what you're proposing could be a component to make sure that it doesn't get bad again, like it's gotten bad in the past. And frankly, I see an opportunity if, if what you're proposing works, that we ought to be looking at using it in some of our other parks. And I think specifically of Westwoods Golf Course, where we've had a huge algae problem in the past with our golf course lakes. So, you may have stumbled, or not stumbled, you might have come up with a very good solution for us to work on, on both Lake Arbor Park and other parks in our community. So I really want to thank all of you and congratulate you for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Very good. Next, we'll get a update and funding request from Arvada Economic Development Association.
What a great act to follow.
Yeah, boy. Never want to follow animals or kids, you know?
Oh, man. No, you guys are great. My two daughters, our two daughters went to Moore Middle School, and I don't recall them being as smart as these kids. I hope they were, but I don't recall them. But...
It's their dad we're worried about.
You should be. Well, Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for giving us some of your valuable time tonight. I think you all know me, my name's Ken Olson. I have the honor of being the president of the Board of the Arvada Economic Development Association. And my colleague here is Daniel Riley, and I think you know him too. He's our executive director. And one week ago today, he became the father of a baby girl named Violet.
Thank you, Ken.
So congratulations to Daniel. So, we're here to tell you once again about the Economic Development Association, and we're going to try and keep it somewhat short. But as we were, as I was looking at our mission again for the organization, I really started thinking about, you know, what do we really focus on? What do we really think about as a, as a board? And it's really about retention of existing businesses and jobs in Arvada, bringing new businesses to Arvada, promoting primary job growth, improving the aesthetics of the city, and a sustainable and growing tax base for the city. You got, oh, go ahead. Thanks. So who are we? Well, we're seventeen board members and twelve retention committee members. These are all volunteers, and these are community and business leaders. We have a couple of more board members here tonight. And these people are really quality people, and the reason I like this board as much as I do is because of the people on the board. They're just, they're just terrific people. Even better are the four staff members, and I don't like to call them staffs like you, Dot. I'd rather call them team members. So I've been working on that for our last board meetings. Daniel and the rest of the team? They do all the heavy lifting. They make our job very, very easy, and they are just top-notch. And I've been in business for 45 years, and they are at the top of my list as terrific employees and people. We are a separate entity from the city, and we work with about 67 strategic partners. This is a consolidated list of where those partners are from and what they do.
Excellent. So I'll take over. Council, thank you so much for your time. Again, Daniel Riley, Executive Director of Arvada Economic Development Association. Just wanted to frame up a little bit of our presentation, somewhat of a refresher for our council members who've heard our presentation in the recent past, as well as some information for our newest council member. We would like to just show you a little bit of context and what we would refer to as more the modern era of Arvada Economic Development Association and the return on your investment into our organization. For a little bit of that context, the first eighteen years from about 1992 up until 2009, Arvada Economic Development Association did around a million dollars' worth of activity of funding grants and loans and stuff into the community. But since then, through your support, we've been able to really amplify the efforts and the outcomes. And we look at that, the last ten years is really where we started to be much more intentional and strategic about how we invest that funding and looking to get the types of outcomes that you want to see in the business community as it pertains to economic development. So just a couple of quick highlights of where that money that you've invested into us has gone in that last ten years. We've, we've done quite a few loans through revolving loan program, which have all been fully repaid. We've founded what's called the Arvada Manufacturing Initiative, which has now gone to a nationwide best practices on how to educate businesses on being better businesses and being more productive, eliminating waste and being more successful and more profitable. We've done almost $15 million in grants to small businesses. We've done a microloan program where we've been able to leverage other, or private sector funding on top of ours to lend to small businesses here in Arvada, and those are businesses that are disadvantaged and don't normally qualify for funding from a commercial bank. We've also done a lot of our larger grants, which we call our Opportunity Fund, and we've now renamed to our Economic Impact Fund, which looks at things like shopping center redevelopment and improvements that we can really pour into places that generate sales tax return to the city, and we can measure that return. The last thing that we've been doing too is supporting other programs such as Arvada Works, the Arvada Chamber, which you're very familiar with, helping, sorry, catalyze some industrial development in parts of the city in order to create space for new jobs to come into our community. And we're also trying to understand how we can better engage the community in conversation about commerce, development, commercial activity, and where the balance is between the quality of life that our community desires and what drives the funding that helps support all of those components. Just looking at the last three years, so if you remember, last year, we came to for a request for $500,000, and at that point in time, the city agreed to give us $250,000 and for us to kind of come back this year and see where we're at and if there's opportunity for additional funding. Prior to that, we had gotten another half a million dollars from city council in 2016. So, over the last three years, about $750,000 has come into our organization, and we're really continually trying to invest and improve the work that we're doing, including adopting new, a new impact-driven strategic plan, so being even more intentional and strategic about the money we have and how we measure the success of that, continuing to refine our grant programs on a continual basis, and also building upon those focus groups and the community conversation. We're going to be undertaking a communication and public relations effort to really engage the community in that continuing conversation through some surveys and understanding how do we actually help the community understand what's going on and help drive the work that we're doing based upon the community's needs. So, since 2016, AIDA has done $762,000 in funding to 71 different projects. Those businesses impacted, yielded $23 million in new capital investment, created or retained over 130 jobs, and generated over $12 million in total sales tax. So we wanted to demonstrate that the investment you make into us does have a return back to the city that we can measure. A couple of highlights again, mainly for our newest council member, some of the projects that we've been involved with that were a little bit larger scale. The Wonko Expansion Project, which was a great success, a partnership between several different public organizations like Adams County Open Space, the City of Arvada, Jefferson County EDC, AIDA, all to support the not only expansion of new primary jobs in our community, but to keep a company like Wonko here, who is struggling to find a home for what they needed to accomplish through, through their growth and success. Pressient was an opportunity to repurpose some struggling real estate that also, we believe, helped retain one of our large primary employers in Leavenova. We also, as I mentioned earlier, began a program called Arvada Manufacturing Initiative, where we invest in training the owners of that company into making better business decisions that we can measure their success down to the dollar that they're saving, the amount of new jobs that they're adding, and the amount of bad investments that they're avoiding and new investments that they're making. And we'd like to continue building upon that by expanding that into other industries that are no, that are not just manufacturing-related, but taking the concept of process improvement and providing that to other industries in Arvada to see if we can replicate similar results and return on investment there. And lastly, as I mentioned, the Arvada Works Program, which we all know, businesses in Arvada, their number one pain point right now is workforce and finding and retaining qualified workers. So we believe making investments into that program and the pipeline that supports all of our great businesses here will, will continue to yield fruit in the future. But just to sum it all up, here's a nice infographic that shows kind of where all that funding has gone, $2.75 million over the last ten years, what we've gotten out of that money through our organization. Again, AIDA, we can't take credit wholly for these projects. We support these projects, we pave the way for these projects, we create an environment that is conducive to making these investments and removing barriers for these investments to be made, and somewhat augmenting and enhancing the investment that these private sector and business folks are doing in our community. And some of these programs are directly resulting in the outcomes you see there, so... Just a real quick snapshot, this is just a balance sheet over the last ten years to kind of show where that money came in and where it all went, and you can see the different types of things that we've invested in, such as our small business grants, our Opportunity Fund, the AMI Program, et cetera. So, where we want to go from here is continuing to fuel the work that we're doing and sustain the work that we're doing. We have a philosophy of trying to build a balance in our funding of $1 million that we can use as reserves to continuing investment into the great programs that we have in case we hit an economic downturn, as well as the opportunity to dig into that pot of money should we have a large project come our way that can make a huge impact to our community, where we can be nimble and responsive to the needs. to our community, where we can be nimble and responsive to the needs of a project of that size with the types of resources that we, that we can hold in, in those reserves. That also allows us to maintain our effective funding levels for our existing programs that already have this proven success. We are also, again, always looking for continuous improvement opportunities and innovation opportunities. We're developing data-driven performance measures around commercial real estate that directly support the jobs, capital investment, and tax revenue that we run after in our mission. And we're also, again, creating that community outreach program to facilitate conversations with citizens, not just businesses, as traditionally our audience has, has been the business community. We want to scale the successes and outcomes of the programs that, that we've had into new industries, as I mentioned, and competitively position Arvada into the future through support through our smart cities initiatives too, as we see that going hand-in-hand with economic development. And lastly, we want to create financing tools using some of our strategic partners to continue to leverage the money you have. So taking money from other sources, pooling with the money we get from you, and being even more impactful. So right now, this is a snapshot of where we're at with current funding, and I apologize for the size there, it looks like our graph got a little bit squished, but where we want to be based on that full funding level. And as you can see, one year ago when we presented to you, the gap between where we wanted to be and where we were was about one point three six million dollars. Through your support and some retooling and investment on our side and being more strategic in our approach, we've narrowed that gap now down to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're making progress towards building up that support of where we want to be at, what we, what we believe is our full funding and most optimal funding. So at that, I'll turn it back over to, to Ken.
Which is the right, okay. So what are the benefits to the city? You know, we've got a list here, but I think one of the things that's impressed me the most in being on this board and working with this board is the good stewardship of the money. Money doesn't get spent by this board unless there's a solid discussion of why it's being spent, where it goes, and that it, it is taxpayer money, and we're going to use it appropriately towards the mission of the organization. That happens every time. We have some very thoughtful people on the board, and the conversations are excellent in that regard. Why do we have a competitive advantage in Arvada? Well, this organization forms the bridge between businesses and the city. Because of the business leaders, leaders on the, on the board and the activity that they have within the city, we're, we're champions for the city in, in the business environment and help make it a better place for, for businesses to come into the city and businesses to stay in the city. So what's our ask? Our ask tonight is for the other two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we started to ask for last year. We respectfully request that from the available twenty-twenty one-time funds, and our duty then is to report back to you on the results of, of using that money in behalf of the city. Thank you.
So with that, we'll field any questions you may have.
Any questions from council? Mr. Marriott?
So this isn't so much a question, but more of a, of a statement. I serve as the council liaison to the Economic Development Association, and I just want to assure the council that the AIDA is taking great care with this money. They're definitely making the most use of it possible. If I reflect back in Arvada, back in the time of the recession, Arvada never had a down budget year, and the reason why is we have a diverse, vibrant economy, especially compared to other suburbs similarly situated to us. A big part of that is AIDA, the competitive advantage that they give Arvada. And one of those early slides had a, showed there that just the activities of AIDA in the last ten or fifteen years have yielded more than twelve million dollars' worth of sales tax collections for this, for the city of Arvada, and it's one of the things that makes our community strong, the fact that we have jobs in our community and not just a bedroom community where everybody leaves. It also helps us to have a much more diverse and robust set of goods and services available in our community. We all play a part in that, the citizens certainly do. The government plays a part in that, but AIDA plays a big part in that and really is that competitive advantage. And I think it's very important for us to continue that partnership, to continue to enable AIDA to do the great work that they do. We are in great economic times now. We will not always be, and, and you have to invest in good times and in bad, and it, again, it will continue to give us that competitive advantage over all of the other communities around this part of the world. So thank you for what you do, and I would be fully supportive of, of, of us looking within our budgetary process and constraints to come up with some additional funding for AIDA.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I would just, I, I appreciate the work that Ryan and your, Ryan, I am so sorry. That is such a-
They look so much alike.
Every time someone calls me that, I'm just flattered.
I know. I'm just so used to calling Ryan. But Daniel, what you and your team are doing, and then to the board, thank you for the countless number of hours that you put in on behalf of the Arvada businesses. But my question is really more directed at Mr. Devon with regard to one-time funds. I know that you probably, and Mr. Archer, we probably don't have that number nailed down exactly, but are there funds available for us to even consider?
Yes, there will be funds available for you to consider. This, this request is certainly near the top of the priority list.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I appreciate all that AIDA does, and I think this investment in our community, you can't find a better return on the investment, so I would support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think we can safely direct Mr. Devon and Mr. Archer to look at whether or not this is something we can figure out a way to, to provide this additional funding. Let me talk, in addition to the success stories already talked about, we just had one with the groundbreaking that Barbara Nichols has done in our community. Barbara Nichols is a phenomenal manufacturing company. They, we just had the, the groundbreaking for their major expansion, which they could have done in some other city, some other state, but because of the work of our Economic Development Association and because of the appropriate climate here in Arvada, that's very, I think, appropriately balancing the needs of our citizens and our business community, they made the decision to invest in Arvada and do this tremendous expansion. They make components for nuclear submarines, for torpedoes, for aerospace, satellites, spaceships, all that kind of stuff. It's getting built right here in Arvada, Colorado, so we're not just a bedroom community. And through, you know, the efforts of, of AIDA, we're able to retain businesses instead of having to throw dollars at companies to come to Arvada. So I really applaud the efforts of our retention committee, all the volunteer hours that put in by, by the board, for which they're certainly not compensated monetarily, but it's just this wonderful mentality of Arvada residents that they want to give back to this incredible community, and, and we've got some great expertise on that board, and I thank the board members for their time and energies on that, and certainly thank the team for what they're doing to, to keep Arvada strong. So thank you, and we'll direct our, our folks to see if we can cobble together those dollars.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to end by just inviting the other council members to a board meeting if they have the time. We meet the second Tuesday of the month. It varies in location, but would be happy to make sure that you get to the right place.
Does Mr. Marriott go on and on at these meetings to make them last long, like happen this evening before we came down?
Yes.
You know, he really adds a lot of value. One of the things, one of the things I've found with these meetings that has been good for me is I learn from them, and I learn from Mr. Marriott, I learn from Mr. Devon about what's going on in the city outside of the Economic Development Association. So it's been, it's been good for me.
Great. Thank you all very much for the presentation. We'll be looking at it very seriously.
Thank you.
Although these, more middle school kids would have, you know, if they'd known that you could come in and ask for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they might have. So I'm not sure that was the best thing. Okay, now we'll move on to, to public comment. We have several people who have signed up. Michael, is it Meehan? McMeehan?
McMahon?
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Michael McMahon. I'm your new liaison with the Arvada Parks Advisory Committee, so I'm here to represent them for tonight and then for the rest of the week, and we'll bring forward many items, and we'll come quarterly. But mostly, I wanted to introduce myself and talk about a couple of the items that we're doing. Art in the Park is one, as you guys are familiar with, they're going to start decorating or paintings or some type of wrap on public utility items. We're in the process of doing that. Park assessments, we've been responsible for assessing parks, we're revisiting how we're doing the park assessments, and I found that very, just very interesting. I've lived here for twenty-seven years, but being, you know, going to these parks that I've never thought I would vision, have been very impressed with Arvada park system. Currently, we're also doing the matching funds towards the school grants. We have three schools that have applied for the five thousand dollar funding, Excel Academy, Westwood Elementary, and Drake Middle School. In the next week, we're going to make that decision of who's going to get that money. We've also been presented from the Medigan Lake landscaping, not really unlike what these guys are talking about with Pomona Lake, they have the same issues with their lake and surrounding ecosystem. Also, I look forward to the new members. I think you guys have just vetted new members for all the volunteers, for all the committees. Look forward to meeting with them and orientating them, and that's all I have. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions? I just want to thank you for your hard work. It's a great, great group, and we'll be giving you some additional members.
Very good, thank you.
You bet. Nancy Young?
I'm going to move this over here so I can point as I work on this diagram. Good evening. Historic McAvoy Park, established over one hundred years ago, was Arvada's first park and the only park for nearly forty years. This treasured park has been compromised by a private for-profit apartment building known as Park Place Old Town, an urban renewal project. A portion of the building has been built on the park, as shown on this detailed map, and you can see it, this is the park boundary along here. These white intrusions are the Park Place Old Town building. During the application process for the apartment building, citizens frequently questioned whether it would encroach on the park. The questions were never answered until now with this map, which clearly shows that part of Park Place is built on park land. This situation is important for many reasons. First, it suggests a serious issue within the city planning process. Every park within Arvada is at risk from this same error being repeated in the future, especially since we now have a precedent. Second, it raises issues with the pending changes in the Land Development Code, which will grant extensive administrative approval authority to the staff and dramatically reduces opportunities for citizen attention and review of proposed developments. The compromise to Historic McAvoy Park is not alone in being questioned. There is another pending situation in Historic Old Town questioning the administrative powers of the planning department. The conclusion here is that, the conclusion here is that any development near a park should be subject to the full public hearing process to make sure that this situation does not happen again. Furthermore, any development within or adjacent to any historic district should also be subject to the full public hearing process. The City of Arvada talks the talk about the importance of parks and historic districts, and yet, the city's actions, shown here, show that neither is important enough to assure that they are not overwhelmed with new buildings. It's time for the City of Arvada to walk the walk, and you can do it in the new Land Development Code. That's how government can begin to establish trust with the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Have you shared that map with our city team?
This map was created by the City of Arvada for the purpose of the Rolston Road Reconstruction Project. It has been distributed broadly within the city.
Very good, thank you. And then Robin Mativie will be right after that.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Mativie.
If you could bring that microphone over by either, thank you.
Sure. Is that better?
Yes, much, thank you.
My name is Cindy Mativie, and I would like to address the council members this evening regarding the proposed zoning map changes. My husband Fred and I have owned the property at ninety-two fifty-five West Fifty-seventh Avenue. We have lived and worked in the Arvada area for about twenty years. We love this city. We bought the property as an investment nineteen years ago. The property is surrounded on two sides by MXU zoning, Walmart Auto Zone, and Taco Bell. On the east side, there is a bike path and a community garden. Even though we were not notified of the zoning changes until a month ago, we do not disagree that there is a need for changes in the process. Based on the new zoning guidelines, our property is a transitional property and should be zoned MXN. The MXN zoning will make development less cumbersome and encourage new growth in Arvada. Currently, the map shows our property zoned as R twenty-four, and that would be a downgrade in zoning. The MXN zoning is perfectly suited for this property because it is truly a transitional property, going from high-density use to low-density use before reaching a residential area. The property has a bus route on Fifty-seventh Avenue and is two miles from, or is one mile from two light rail stations. We are a half a mile from the Arvada K through eight school and less than a quarter mile from the Rolston Creek Park and Splash Pad, which is right next to the Rolston Creek Trail. The property is a mile from Old Town and only a few hundred feet from establishments such as Santiago's and Walmart. The property is about a quarter mile from the new businesses off of Fifty-eighth Avenue, Mod Pizza, Tokyo Joe's, Five Guys. As you just heard, this property is surrounded by businesses and amenities that need local support. The prop, as a property owner, in what was known as the Arvada Triangle area, we saw how difficult the previous zoning made development in Arvada. We have always been supportive of smart development in the area, and we supported the removal of the Arvada Plaza and the construction of Walmart. We would like to applaud the city for developing the new zoning maps and taking a proactive approach to development in Arvada. The use-by-right zoning dictates that our property should be zoned MXN. It is meant to consider all aspects of current use and potential development. In the fall of two thousand nineteen, our property was put under contract by a developer proposing a new apartment complex known as the Arvada Complex. These apartments will offer moderate-priced housing options, and new development will bring in people who want to live and work in the Arvada area but cannot afford or find appropriate housing.
And I'm going to need to cut you off there if I can.
In conclusion, I would like to ask for support for the MXN designation for our property at ninety-two fifty-five West Fifty-seventh Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Robin Mativie.
Thanks for taking a minute to listen to me. As you heard from my mother, I've grown up in Arvada a long time. I went to St. Anne's, Arvada Middle School, graduated Arvada High School in oh-eight. I seem to build a resume around Wadsworth Boulevard, working as a lifeguard at Myers Pool in Seacrest, helping the elderly at Colorado Lutheran Home, and baking away my stresses and studies in college at Cheesecake Therapy. Rest in peace. But as time grew on, I found myself hafting to leave, though I was Arvada's biggest cheerleader, constantly inviting my friends to come for brunch and drinks and beers at the beer places. Unfortunately, I was priced out of the market. I- I can't find middle-income housing in Arvada. I can't find middle-income housing anywhere near Old Town Arvada. It's luxury apartments, or it's old apartments that I wouldn't want to be in at this time. Unfortunately, there's no in-between option. However, granting MXN zoning to the, to complexes like Arvada Place and would allow for this deficit to be helped. Asking for only 63 units, they will be one-to-two-bedroom apartments ranging in 800 to 1,000 square feet for only $1,300 to $1,700. I don't know if you've priced Arvada's market recently, but what I found for similar new, less spacious apartments were starting at $1,500, and they just went up from there for less than 700 square feet. You felt cramped, you didn't feel like you had a community, you just had a box and a wall, and you paid a lot of money for it. The MXN zoning will allow apartment complexes to offer more affordable housing while maximizing a sense of home and community in, in the neighborhood and to its residents. Furthermore, allowing MXN zoning will allocate 25 feet of easement along the east side of the property to help with the path my mom mentioned. I grew up there a long time, and I've seen that path develop from a dirt path to now a paved path, but all the while, there continues to be a homeless problem along that path, which really discourages use of that path. It discourages local residents from using it to get to the bus lines, it discourages local residents from using it to get to the businesses just developed on the other side. It creates a barrier between your citizens and where they can go to spend money in your community. Because of this lack of oversight on this path, it's not safe to walk at night in an early hour mornings. I wouldn't feel safe, having lived just right there, knowing what we find on a weekly basis on the fringes of the property tucked into the trees.
Okay. I need to cut you off there. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Next, Jordan Isagusman.
Thank you for having me. I just want to make a comment about options in Arvada. Robin's my sister-in-law, but I've known her since she was about eight years old. In 2013, my wife and I and three kids, we lived in Westminster, and we had a house fire. And when we looked at our options, where we wanted to go, we decided we wanted to come to Arvada because of everything it has to offer. The schools were great, everything we could find to do for our family. And we found it. We found a nice 1,700-square-foot apart, or house. We could afford it, had a nice yard for our kids to play with their dog, it had a two-car garage, it was in a safe neighborhood, and our daughter could walk to Arvada High School. We lived there for about two and a half years, and then the housing market really took off. And our landlord decided that he would sell that house, and so we could no longer rent it. And when we looked around Arvada, the only thing we could have find, we could find in our price range was a 950-square-foot, three-bedroom apartment. The first day we woke up in that apartment, we woke up to the smell of marijuana coming through our, through our door. Right by our front door was the chair that all the neighbors decided that they would sit in and smoke and do drugs. There were homeless people living all around our building, there were homeless people living on the other side of the fence. At one point, there was even a body found on the other side of the fence, just steps from my front door. And then there were the rats. And everywhere you would look, there were rats, just feet from our front door at the dumpster. They would walk, run down the breezeways, and every time we opened our door, we had to worry about whether or not a rat was going to run in. Then they chewed through the siding. And I could, I remember sitting on my couch, and I could hear them climbing in the walls, wondering if they were going to chew through the wall and come into my apartment. Anytime we took a complaint to the management, they knew that there was not a lot of options that we had, and we weren't taken seriously. But all the while we were living in the apartment, we told ourselves it was okay because we were saving for our home, we were saving for that time when we could buy our own place. But eventually, we were faced with a choice, and as we sought, we had three choices. We could stay in an unsafe, unhealthy apartment for our kids, we could move to a better situation but would be well out of our means, and stop the chances that we had of building our own, buying our own home. And our third option is leaving Arvada, which we don't want to do. See, like I said, Arvada has everything, and everything a family wants and needs. But as Robin said, there are a lot of places in Arvada that cater to lower income and higher income, but there's nothing in the middle. But one thing Arvada is missing is that MXN zoning option that would allow families to come in. One of the last things Jim Sullivan said tonight was, "If you're going to spend 40 years in one place, Arvada's a pretty great place to do it." And I agree with him. Unfortunately for middle-class families, it's not really feasible right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Amanda Soloric.
Hi, guys. I'm Amanda Solorio. I'm the Realtor working with the Mativis for the sale of the property at 9255 West 57th. I know I've emailed some of you, so some of this might be redundant. But in 2019, the Mativis approached me saying they were interested in selling their home, and they had unique zoning, PUD-BPR. I called the city to confirm that, and it was confirmed. We put the property on the market with that zoning as the selling point, and went under contract the following month. We've been under contract four months now. We were supposed to close today for this Arvada Place Apartments, and unfortunately, we were told, I believe in January, that the zoning would change the property to R24. I called the Mativis and said, "Hey, had you received anything in the mail, any, did you know about this?" They had no idea about the zoning change. We would not have marketed the property the way we did had we known there was going to be a zoning change. I asked, "Did you receive anything in the mail? Are you sure?" They received no notification. We met with the city to talk about the zoning, we went to zoning meetings, planning meetings, and then we thought we had come to an agreement with the MXN zoning to build this Arvada Place Apartments. Unfortunately, we were told that was not going to be approved by city councils, so we are here today to ask for that MXN zoning. We think it's going to be a great addition to Arvada. We think that it's going to, you're taking one pro, one household, and you're making 62 households. You're, you're getting a path that leads people from the residential neighborhood down to businesses. So you're getting housing, you're getting tax dollars, you're getting growth to the small businesses. It really is situated in a good spot for what Arvada wants to accomplish. So we really do feel like the MXN zoning is appropriate. We were upset when we were found out, when we found out the zoning was changing without notification, so we really do ask that you would grant the MXN zoning for this property. Thank you.
Thank you. And to be clear, the zoning has not changed yet, so no final decision's been made. David, is it Benton or Burton?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is David Burton. I'm an architect with Real Architecture Practicing in the Denver metro area. This is our 25th year in business. We specialize in mixed-use and residential apartment and condominium projects. I want to commend staff on their work on the upcoming Land Development Code and the process. I think it's a good thing, and this is the right step. I do want to bring to your attention a portion of the zoning map that I believe is incorrectly designated, and we're working on the design of this project, Arvada Place, at 9255 West 57th Avenue. And we met with planning, and we found out that that property that is currently zoned PUD-BPR, and is part of the Arvada Triangle ODP, would be future designated as R24. We feel that the R24 zoning is not an appropriate transition zoning right next to the Walmart. We also have noted that across 57th Avenue, there are about six properties. One of them has zoned the MXN property, and the other properties are zoned R, or proposed to be zoned R24. If that happens, five of those six properties will be in nonconformance with the proposed code. They don't meet the R24 designation, they're more dense than that. So we, we respectfully ask that not only 9255, but 9255 through 9436 West 57th Avenue all be designated MXN as a proper transition from the MXU zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Maxwell Markham.
Thank you, City Council members, for having me this evening. A few familiar faces, I've had the opportunity to work with a few in the past. So, not to beat a dead horse, but I'm here regarding the proposed rezoning for the property at 9255 West 57th Ave. I live here in Arvada, I was born and raised in Arvada, and I continue to operate my life, business, and family here. I've been a part of the area through several stages of my life, and I desire to keep seeing it cultivate the strong sense of community that we see today. I'm here to propose that the City Council reconsider the current proposed zoning under the most recently updated Land Development Code. The current owners had bought the property several years ago, as you heard, as an investment. The property is currently zoned PUD-BPR, and like you said, has not been changed yet. We are currently under contract with a local developer who plan to utilize that current zoning, and during our steps of the due diligence process, we were made aware of the zoning changes for the site, which obviously have massive implications for the land use, marketability, and value. Part of the most recent revisions to the LDC, we were confident that the city would impose the MXN zoning for the site, since it's matched an overwhelming majority of the surrounding sites. Much to our dismay, we were made aware that the city was proposing to impose the R24 zoning. This would heavily prohibit development for the site and would likely impact the current property value by more than 50%, and put the current owner's hopes for retirement further out of reach. It would also heavily limit housing supply in an area that so desperately is searching for more affordable options. Much like most of us learn in Economics 101, the restrictions on supply for the area would further drive up housing costs, especially for an area that is already struggling to meet demand. There is hardly any housing product that exists today that can optimize low-density options and still be relatively affordable. Many residents moving to this area cannot afford to purchase and are relying on for-rent housing options to be able to participate in communities they so badly want to be a part of. You can count on it when I say there is not a single affordable rental product on the market that can utilize low-density options unless we basically give the land away for free. At this point, we're asking City Council to reconsider the zoning for the site to MXN zoning so that it further meets the needs of the community and works more cohesively with the proposed LDC in the immediate area.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address City Council during public comment, separate from the public hearing that's going to be coming up? Seeing now I'll close the public comment portion, Ms. Miller, did you have a comment?
I did. I just wanted to give a huge shout-out to a member of our team, Kristen Rush. So we are having some serious technology issues up here, and my iPad doesn't work, Lauren's iPad doesn't work, this TV doesn't work, and I was flying blind, so I sent a frantic text, and we have all of our agendas in paper, and it all happened behind the scenes, and I just thank you very, very much.
Those of us who don't rely upon technology and always have a full package, we're not having the same difficulty. Thank you, Kristen, for coming to the rescue.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a few items on our consent agenda tonight. The first is a resolution authorizing a change order to a construction contract between Arvada and Trimplem Construction in the amount of approximately $482,000 for the 2019 concrete replacement program. Second one's a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of approximately $749,000 to Farber Specialty Vehicles for the purchase of a custom-built Public Safety Command vehicle. Next one is a resolution authoring a change order to a construction contract between Arvada and Diamond Contracting Corporation in the amount of approximately $205,000 for the Sim Street 24-inch water transmission main. Next one is a resolution authorizing a lease agreement between Arvada and Regent C. Centers for the lease of retail space at 6350 Sheridan Boulevard. Next is a resolution authorizing a construction contract between Arvada and APC Construction for $8,263,000 for 2020 mill overlay and reconstruct. Next is a resolution authorizing the lease between the City of Arvada and Grub Concepts, a Forever West Farms for agricultural production at the hills at Stanley Lake property. Final item on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Arvada and Schultz Industries Incorporated for landscape maintenance. Do I have a motion? Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that items are, or resolutions are 20-023 through 20-029 be approved.
Mr. Jones, did you have a question? Motion's for approval, all votes cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeiffer being in excused absence. Next, we have a resolution authorizing a State of Colorado Department of Human Services contract between the City of Arvada and the State of Colorado to provide grant funding to the city in the amount of $477,867 for the Arvada Police Department Co-Responder Program. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think as most council is aware, we started a co-responder program a few years ago, and in the first year of that program, we received 368 calls for service within the community, and each month, we've seen increases of about 16 calls for service a month, per month, go on from, increase from that, from that base amount. In response, the Arvada Police Department is seeking to expand the program through a co-responder program through a grant with the State of Colorado to provide grant funding in the amount of $477,000. And these funds would be used to continue the co-responder program and also start to provide a level of case management for mental health related calls. This would enable the police department to better serve the mental health needs of many of the people that they're, that they're responding to. And in addition to providing, you know, the, the, the calls for service, mental health services, in response to the call of reservice, they would provide active case management. Therefore, the team at the police department applied for this grant, and we're recommending approval of the resolution in order to initiate the implementation of the grant.
Okay, City Council, questions or action? Ms. Ford?
I'd like to make a motion if there are no questions.
Mr. Jones, did you have a question?
I just was trying to get in there to make the motion.
Okay, very good. Ms. Ford?
Thanks, David. I move that R20-030, a resolution authorizing a State of Colorado Department of Human Services contract by and between the City of Arvada and the State of Colorado to provide grant funding to the city in the amount of $477,867 for the Arvada Police Department Co-Responder Program be, be approved.
Motion's for approval? All votes cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeiffer being in excused absence. Thank you. Ms. Miller, do you have a first reading?
Absolutely, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 20-002, an ordinance amending Section 78-292, 78-295, 78-298, and 78-299 of Article 5, Rights of Way, of Chapter 78, Public Improvements of the Arvada City Code, be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearing to be set for March 16, 2020, at 6:15 p.m.
Very good. That's a very nice reading on first reading. Let's hope the second reading is as good. You want to vote on your motion? All votes are cast. That passes six to zero, Mr. Pfeiffer being in excused absence. Thank you. Okay, we're up to public hearings. Do we need a stretch in place before? One quick stretch in place, just to stand up. We won't take a recess. Okay, well, I guess we're going to take a short. [laughter] Yeah, right. ratification and approval of CP 2019-0001, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado to amend the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan Land Use designation pertaining to Colorado Tap House from Planned Unit Development Industrial to Planned Unit Development Business Professional Residential located at 14982 West 69th Avenue. Same time, we'll consider an ordinance, Council Bill 20001, rezoning certain land within the City of Arvada, Colorado Tap House from City of Arvada PUDI, Planned Unit Development Industrial, to PUDBPR, Planned Unit Development Business Professional Residential, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, approximately located at 14982 West 69th Avenue. And finally, we'll consider the Colorado Tap House Preliminary Development Plan generally located at 14982 West 69th Avenue. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll have Planning Manager Rob Smentana introduce this item.
Chief Mayor, members of the council, as mentioned, this is a request for a comprehensive plan amendment, a rezoning, and a preliminary development plan for the Colorado Tap House. This would be for a approximately 6,700-square-foot building located at 14982 West 69th Avenue. It is on a one, approximately a two-acre site. The comprehensive plan amendment, as mentioned, would be from a industrial zone, industrial land use designation to a commercial land use designation, and the Planning Commission at their February 4 meeting did approve that resolution, and so the action before each night would be ratification of that action. The Planning Commission also recommended approval of the rezoning from PUDI to PUDBPR and the preliminary development plan. The posting log and mailing affidavit have been provided, and they are in order, and staff did recommend approval of the other two cases as well, the PDP and rezoning, and both of those were recommended to you by the Planning Commission unanimously for approval. With that, the applicant is here to make a presentation and answer questions, and we also have Jake Nicholls, one of our senior planners, here to answer questions as well.
Very good. The posting log and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. Anybody that wishes to testify on this matter, if you'll raise your right hand, swear affirm the testimony you're going to give, and these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. The applicant may proceed with their presentation.
Okay. Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for your time tonight. We'll hopefully keep this brief and get you out of here. I'm Debbie Clissis with Gene Engineering, 5690 Webster Street in Arvada. I'm here with Eric and Jen Zietlow, the developer of the Colorado Tap House, and Paul Batista, the architect with Batista Design Group. And we'll breeze through this. Here's our vicinity map. We're located in the existing Cottonwood Park, industrial park, just off of Indiana Street at 69th, 72nd Avenue, big intersection, brand-new intersection just off the page. West Woods Mesa there is to the north, and the GEOs neighborhood development is to the As Rob mentioned, we're asking for PUD-BPR zoning. The BPR zoning is also, the GEOs development is also the PUD-BPR zoning in West Mesa, so it fits with the neighborhood. We will be doing a tap house with a food truck, because the PUDI zoning, which is existing zoning, allows for a restaurant, but not for the food truck model, so that's why we need to rezone it. And because we need to rezone it, we will also have to do a comprehensive plan revision. Along with that is our PDP plan. As you can see, this is the site, so it is right about two acres, but unfortunately, almost half of it is encumbered by the floodplain of Ralston Creek. So that has constrained our development a little bit, and we are also applying for a clomer F to get the building out of the floodplain. Here's a aerial of the site plan. The building is located on the south side of the site, next to the creek, to kind of take advantage of the path and the creek there. The existing industrial building, very sleepy building, is to the east, and that's the backside of that building, so not much going on there. And then, the site entrance is aligned with 68th Avenue, per the request of the city traffic engineer, and then our parking and stuff is to the north. And with that, I'll throw it over to Paul to talk about the architecture.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen. My name's Paul Batista. My address is 8203 Klein Street, Arvada, Colorado. I'm going to keep these comments very brief. The more compelling part of our presentation is Mr. Zietlow's story about why he wants to do this project. With architecture and design, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but what we've tried to do is design an interesting-looking building that hearkens a little bit to Mountain Lodge, a little bit rustic, a little bit industrial. It's predominantly stone, some metal elements, and timber accents. There's a lot of different levels. There's a lot of indoor/outdoor spaces to relate to the trail, patios, roof decks, to take advantage of the amenities of the trail. A lot of attention was paid to the landscaping, buffering to the GEOs community to the west, positioning of the building as far away as we possibly get it from the GEOs community, and also to take advantage of the trail system. Again, a lot of indoor/outdoor spaces to take advantage of the amenities of the great Colorado weather that we have, maybe today notwithstanding, but not too bad today. I think, I'll turn it over to Eric, and I'll be available for any questions that come up later. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to present our project here tonight. I'd like to thank the city staff, Planning Commission, our project team, our future neighbors at GEOs, and if you didn't notice, the Kussler Museum's kind of catty-corner. Been talking to the Kussler family, and also the other residents and business owners. They've been very good neighbors with us and provided their input over this past year. It's been a long journey for us, but they helped us shape and reshape the design. We had to make some changes to kind of accommodate some of the concerns about some noise traveling to the west, and you'll see that in the architecture. My name is Eric Zietlow, 6137 Holman Street in Arvada, Colorado, and along with my wife, Jen, we're the developers and the future owners of the Colorado Tap House. We're both Colorado natives. I grew up up in Broome Field. She grew up in Golden. We kind of split the difference about 25 years ago, landed at 64th and Indiana, which is just about a mile from the location. Over the years, we've always witnessed that tremendous residential growth on the west side, but we've always wondered, along with our neighbors, why the commercial side seemed to lag a little bit, or didn't even develop at all. And it's been especially true of upscale restaurants and social gathering places. As Debbie and the staff know, our site does pose some challenges, and we've kind of learned that these types of challenges and the associated increased building costs are a major reason why commercial projects seem to actually end up being built elsewhere. And this hurts Arvada, and those easy building sites appear to be long gone. So while those corporate builders, they might look at their metrics and their demographics and the numbers and their stats, it's clear to us that they just don't understand West Arvada and the people that live there. Fortunately for us, we do, and we're willing to put our trust in them and give them something that we know that they're asking for, and that's a place like the Colorado Tap House to go and hang out. In fact, we're willing to bet on those people, like those that are here tonight showing in support, or have shown their support through some emails, that we're a part of your packet. We believe that City Council and the City of Arvada also be happy if people are staying in Arvada and spending their money here instead of elsewhere. So let's talk a little bit about the Colorado Tap House itself, the location. I backed up to this slide, because it really shows how perfectly situated we are along Ralston Creek Trail with direct access right up to the front door. This is going to provide individuals and families safe walking and biking access for miles in either direction, and those that choose to bike, you'll see that they've got about, we've got about 80 bike parking spots planned waiting for them, and we're putting in a bicycle repair station that'll be available to anybody using the trail. We're also glad to see, while there's a lot of construction going up Indiana, every time a section of that gets completed, that non-motorized access is improved, and we're happy to see that. So if you look at the next slide, this gives you an idea of the experience, and it's going to be a warm and welcoming place. We're going to be family-friendly for dogs on the patio, and the outdoor games area that you can kind of see on that top part of that slide, we know will be entertaining for all ages, the Jumbo Jenga, Giant Connect Four, Bocce, and the ever-popular cornhole. So whether people come in solo or with family and friends, they're going to find the seating options to meet their needs. We'll have indoor and outdoor. We'll be upstairs, downstairs. There'll be bar seating, high tops, booze, picnic tables, community tables, standing drink rails. We're going to extend that time we all love in Colorado by having some outdoor fire pits, both seated and some standing options, and if somebody's looking for a place to host an event, on the second floor, we'll have an indoor/outdoor area that can be reserved for those private events. So I know you guys have water up there, but if you're thirsty, we picked Colorado Tap House for a reason. We believe Colorado produces some of the best beverages, period, and we want to focus on supporting the local and state economy. So we're planning for 30 taps that will have not only beer, but also cider, the trending hard seltzers and kombuchas, and maybe even a mead, if that's your thing. We'll also have wines and the popular red and wine slushies, maybe a little swirl, and a selection of Colorado craft cocktails named after the local area. And some ideas we've been tossing around include putting edible Goldflakes in a Gold Strike, maybe in Old Town fashion, or an Arvada Pioneer Mule. We got a few ideas at a Planning Commission meeting, but we're still looking for that perfect celery-inspired cocktail recipe in honor of Arvada's history with celery farming. So if you have any ideas, feel free to share.
I believe Bloody Marys require celery.
Yeah, yep. So I think that'll work, and it's probably where we'll end up, because I'm not sure the green cocktails go over very well, but it is maybe St. Patty's Day special or something. So if you're not thirsty, maybe you are hungry, we are going to be using the rotating food truck model, but we also be offering light snacks, things like some flatbread pizzas, jumbo pretzel bites, meat-and-cheese trays, chips and queso, things to hold you over until those food trucks show up to bring more substantial options. We believe that the rotating food truck model really allows to easily adapt to the changing palettes of the community. So in closing, I hope you now kind of see our vision for the Colorado Tap House and how it'll benefit the city by filling a big void we see in West Arvada, and we ask for your approval of the project. Thank you for your time, and we'll entertain questions.
Very good. We'll open it up for public comment first, and then we'll have you back up for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Yevak does not wish to speak, but is for the issue. Andrea German does not wish to speak, but is for the issue. Tom Loughlin does wish to speak. Mr. Loughlin?
Your Honor, distinguished board members, my name is Tom Loughlin. I have a resident of Arvada, 17037 West 67th Lane. I live on the third hole in West Woods Golf Area, Golf Course that is. My family are residents of Arvada since the turn of the century, so we've been here a long time. We've seen a lot of change in Arvada. And those of you who know the 17037, that's about as west in Arvada as you can go, but my family's farm was just a little bit east of there. So with all of that change, a lot of the opportunity on the west side has been selection, and what I'm do, ask here, I'm here to ask tonight is, please bring us something new, okay? Please bring us something new. I've been, I've been on this side of Arvada. I've been there my whole life, and what I'm excited about, what these folks are offering, is a lifestyle, and it's about community, okay? We have places in Arvada, of course, on the west side, but there are, there are not that many places, other than maybe the West Woods Golf Course, where we can actually celebrate community, and what Eric and his crew are bringing here gives us that chance. I was at a party up in Lyden Rock this past weekend, a throwback '90s party, and this was the topic of conversation, bring us something new. So that was what we talked about. I really feel strongly that these folks will deliver on what they're, they're talking about, and being responsible. A place where I could walk my dog down the Ralston Trail, and then I could take my dog up and enjoy a Coors Light with me, I'm all about that. So, folks, I appreciate it. I know you have a lot before you, but I think this is a wonderful little idea, and all of West Arvada is rooting for you.
Thank you. Christine still here? She is for the issue. Christine German does not wish to speak, but is for the issue, or it's Christine Landman. And Heather White does not wish to speak, but is for the issue as well. Is there anybody else that would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Victoria Baker. I live at 15047 West 68th Place, which is about a half-block from this, this development. There's 25 families currently in GEOs, the GEOs neighborhood, and we have talked with one another. It's a very community-spirited new development. There's about maybe 30 more, more units that will be within a block of this development. We currently have about six kids, and maybe three more are moving in next door to me in the next couple of months. I met one of them already. And I'm concerned about parking and hours, not due to Mr. Zietlow or Ms. Zietlow, who have been very accommodating, because they're planning to have fairly early hours, but the parking outlet for the parking lot will be straight onto 68th Place, and also straight onto the outlet to the trail, which concerns me. That means that overflow parking is going to go straight into 68th Place, when it could, if the outlet were on the north side, could go out into that industrial area where there's really virtually no, there's no foot traffic, and there's no parking. Nobody's parking on that street right now. So that concerns me, and it was the city planners, the engineers, who said, absolutely not, cannot have the outlet onto the north. So that worries me. I think our parking is going to be affected, and I'm worried about it. I'm worried about the kids walking around, and I don't see the point. My other worry is about the hours. Again, the Zietlos have been very accommodating. They want fairly early hours, and I think that's great. Again, it's a, it's a residential neighborhood, but the city again said, so I wanted that to be written into the zoning, that for this particular site, which is going to be a restaurant site, a bar site with a bar license can be open until 2:00 in the morning, unlike the other industrial businesses there, which don't have overflow parking, don't have people up to all hours, it's not a problem. But the planners said, no, that's too complicated, and it wouldn't be fair to the other businesses. So I would like to see that written into the zoning, the hours that the Zietlos have already agreed to. So that's my concern, and otherwise, we're excited, too. We think it's going to be really cool, and we really like the vision, and we do support it, but I'd like to see the hours written into the zoning, and I'd really like to not see that parking lot open straight out onto 68th Place, where all the overflow parking is going to go right onto 68th Place, and it also opens directly onto the bike path outlet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public comment portion, and I'll ask the applicant to come back up and respond to those two issues, if you would, and then we'll open it up for City Council questions and action.
Okay, so Debbie's going to talk a little bit about the parking, and I'll, I'll address the hours. So we do plan on being family-friendly, and the types of clientele that we're going after that we believe will enjoy our, our location, or the that we believe will enjoy our, our location, are the ones that are going to come, they're going to meet after work, they've got things to do, they got to get up in the morning, and we don't believe being open until 2:00 a.m. makes sense. And, and we don't want to be that place where somebody's been somewhere else, and they're on their way home, and they want to stop off and, and say, oh, it's 1:30, yeah, we can still squeeze another one in. That's not what we're planning on being about. So we have worked out a good neighbor agreement with G.O.S. I signed that with the, with Nestor, who I believe is here. Just this last week, we finalized the terms of that, and we do have our, our planned hours there, and we're planning on being open until 9:00, Sunday through Wednesday, and then Thursday, Friday, and Saturday being open until 10:00. Plan on opening at 11:00 to kind of, if anybody wanted to come in and have one of those pizzas or something and, and hang out, we would be open for them. And again, that's why light snacks until the food trucks arrive. So that's our plan for the operating hours. We acknowledge that our license would allow us to be open, you know, whatever it is, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., but that's certainly not, not our intentions. And we also, in that agreement, did say that we would give them notice if we planned on making any adjustments to those hours. So we do plan on being good neighbors. In fact, we've talked at most, I've contacted every adjacent neighbor, businesses, and a lot of the residential through their HOAs, to make sure that they were very well aware of, of what we were planning.
Thank you.
And just a note on the street connection, we originally started with a connection on the north, brought it to city staff, and they said, no, the traffic engineer wanted that aligned with 68th Place. We went back again after the neighborhood meeting, and there was a lot of concern from G.O.S., and they reevaluated, and staff again recommended. The traffic engineer did recommend that connection, it makes sense. So that's what we have done. Also, there is, we've looked at parking, there is on-street parking on 69th that goes down to Joyce, and also Eric has talked with the Cussler family about shared parking on those industrial parks. There's a lot of sleepy industrial buildings there, and they have been willing to do a shared parking agreement. We have not got that in place yet. So, thank you.
I just do want to clarify one thing. So we've had the discussions. Right now, there's, they're, they're saying, let's take a wait-and-see attitude on overflow parking into their lots, and if it becomes an issue. But right now, we aren't pursuing actual signed agreements with, with those businesses. They've just agreed to work with us in this, in the spirit, and as long as it doesn't become a problem, can plan to, plan to allow us to overflow.
With Mr. Cussler's passing, does the family still intend to keep the museum open?
You know, I didn't feel it was...
Right, I hear you.
Right timing. I did speak with their, their grandson, who happened to be over in the neighborhood, and just introduced myself when I saw him, but didn't feel comfortable addressing that topic.
Sure, sure. Okay. Okay, that ends the presentation. Open it up for City Council questions or action. Mr. Jones?
I have just two questions, but I'd also like to reserve the motion.
You may reserve the motions.
So with regards to, I, thank you for answering the question. One of my questions was shared parking with, you know, because I know that a lot of those buildings are vacant, probably in those timeframes. So I think you taking a proactive approach is very beneficial, so thanks for doing that. But with regard to the traffic flows, and there probably wasn't a traffic study that was needed for this project, I'm assuming?
A traffic letter was required.
A traffic letter?
Correct. Did analyze a number of trips.
Okay. So at the intersection of 69th and Indiana, obviously that Indiana is a state road there, what kind of warrants would be necessary for a traffic light there?
You know, we, somebody from Traffic wasn't able to make it tonight. I tried to get as much information as I could from them, and that was not one of them. There's, there are ongoing studies of the Indiana corridor from 72nd down south, and that's still in progress. I don't have the specific warrant numbers.
Because, you know, that's a dangerous intersection if you're trying to turn north off of 69th, just with the amount of traffic that's coming in. With the improvement at 72nd, it doesn't necessarily help, because traffic's coming down 72nd, or I'm sorry, coming down Indiana a little bit faster than it probably used to with just a single lane there. So just something that I think we need to look at pretty seriously to determine, you know, is there another method for traffic coming in and off of 69th?
Yes, and, and we did get a contribution for a future improvement, so they are paying an impact fee for the trips they are generating.
Okay, all right. Those were my only questions, so if there's others?
Okay. Any other questions from Council? I've got a couple. One is for our team in terms of this, what's the rationale for why we want the inlet for parking where we want it?
Yes. So as they mentioned, they originally showed it on the north side, and our group wanted it lined up with the west, with the G.O.S. entrance. And the primary reason for that is the anticipated traffic movement from the site is going right on 69th, and the anticipated traffic movement into the site is coming in off 69th and taking a left. And if you look up at the site, that northern entrance is closest to that curve, so it has the least amount of visibility while making the exiting and the entering movements. And trust me, after the neighborhood meeting, I went back and begged with Traffic to consider the other location for the neighborhood concerns. And they said, if it was a slight difference in site visibility, they would have supported it. But they said it was a significant difference in terms of site visibility, and they didn't feel it was appropriate, given this potential location, and they felt it was significantly safer.
Okay. And then for the applicant, are you going to be able to have any signing along Indiana?
We haven't discussed signing along Indiana. We believe that today, people just do their searches, and really with the community and the reach that we'll have, we're not expecting to...
Okay, I mean, you're sort of tucked away, but you're, you're confident that you'll have enough of a... And will you have enough, will you have the capability for those of us who ride tandems to be able to park our bikes there?
We'll make a note of that.
And if, and if I've had maybe one too many, I can put my wife in the captain's seat, and I can just pedal from behind. Is that...
We'll see what we can do.
Okay, very good. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. So just for clarity, we're doing CB 20-001 first, and that's the...
The ratification.
The ratification of the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that it's appropriate for that one to go first.
Okay. I move that CB 20-001 in ordinance rezoning certain land within the City of Arvada Colorado Tap House from City of Arvada PUDI, Planned Unit Development Industrial, to PUDBPR, Planned Unit Development Business Professional Residential, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, approximately located at 14982 West 69th Avenue, be approved on final reading number 4724 and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval, all votes cast. That passes six to zero, Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence, although I know he will frequent this place. Mr. Jones?
Hang on, I have technology that I have to find the right.
Gee, look, paper copy, how well it works.
There's too many tabs. Okay. I move that CP 2019-0... Wait a minute. Is that right?
You're moving to ratify and approve CP 2019-001.
Okay, yes. Well, that's what I thought I was doing, but I did it backwards.
Yes, you did.
So, again, technology got in the way. So now I will move to ratify the Planning Commission. I move that CP 2019-001, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan, land use designation pertaining to the, pertaining to Colorado Tap House from Planned Unit Development Industrial to Planned Unit Development Business Professional Residential, located at 14982 West 69th Avenue, be ratified and approved.
All votes cast. That passes six to zero, Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Now the PDP.
Okay, now I got to go to the PDP. I move that Colorado Tap House preliminary development plan generally located at 14982 West 69th Avenue be approved, subject to the attached and updated conditions of approval. This motion is based on the findings of facts adopted by the Planning Commission.
Ms. Melord, you wish to speak?
Absolutely, I'd like to speak to the motion. So I'm going to support this motion, and I think it's the perfect example of placemaking in Arvada. I love the access to the trail. I think that we should build more of these places along the trails in Arvada. And I believe this is a project that, it's going to be one that when you build it, they will come. They'll come by car and by bike and by foot. I think, I think this is fantastic, so congratulations on that.
And I want to thank the applicant for working with the neighborhood in terms of the voluntary agreement, in terms of limiting hours, and I'm sure that they will monitor parking and, and everything and make sure that they address neighborhood issues as they come up. With that, all votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Congratulations, we look forward to it. When's groundbreaking? Okay, that concludes our public hearings. We now have a workshop on the final report of the 2014-2019 City Council Strategic Plan Progress Report 2020-2025 for the City Council Strategic Plan. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We will have Innovation and Performance Manager Kelly Hartman present this item.
Can you remember my title? Thank you, Mark. Good evening, council. I know tonight's been a long night, and we are going to go through this presentation. And my goal for tonight is to really to get your, your feedback and buy-in in our presentation tonight and what we're requesting. So we're going to go through the final report for 2014 to 2019, the strategic plan. We're going to just spend a few minutes looking at your big ideas that came out of the retreat in January. We're going to go through a brief update of the new 2020 to 2025 strategic plan, and then we're going to go through the items that are going to be on future workshops in 2020. And I already broke it, so Ben, carry it away. So there are five strategic results remaining out of the 2014 to 2019 strategic plan. And the first one, which has to do with juvenile pre-sentence assessment, is complete. So all juveniles entering the court with a, with a charge are now receiving pre-sentence assessments as of June of this year. And so we are marking that complete, and will continue to monitor the progress in a performance measure within the community, within the, the court system. We want to carry forward three of the strategic results. One doing, or having to do with the Jefferson Parkway, the attainable senior housing development, and also water supply, so that we can continue to monitor those in the 2020 to 2025 strategic plan. And then we're requesting to remove the strategic result regarding Ridge Home, as that was not a viable option that we explored last year. So as we move forward and we look at the big ideas that you came up with during your retreat, the first one is really looking at that, it's timely tonight, which is making a destination and placemaking within northwest Arvada.
Well, there's one box we can check for, for one place there. We've got many more we need.
So what we're recommending is this become a proposed milestone, which in the current strategic plan, the 2020 to 2025, and so that we are really looking with that in tandem with the comprehensive plan and making sure that there's alignment as we move forward. And then as we look at three years of construction on Ralston Road, we wanted to really make the idea of collaborating with the Harvest Festival a milestone within the vibrant communities and neighborhood strategic result. So again, we're really showing that alignment and addressing safety issues as we move forward. Looking at aligning historic assets and activating historic assets fit perfectly within the history master plan. And so again, we're proposing that those ideas become milestones within the history plan strategic result. And then lastly, celebrating city success in that storytelling, which came up several times during your retreat, we thought would be a perfect milestone under the communication and engagement strategic result. So when we looked at the other items that were on the list, we really wanted to not forget about them or lose track of them and keep them on the radar. So the items you see in the left-hand column are items that you talked about that are currently in progress in some stage within the city at this point. And there's also a list on the right-hand side that we want to keep for future consideration, and they may come up at different times within 2020, or potentially at your strategic planning retreat in 2021. So let's do a quick review and show you where we are with the current 2020 to 2025 strategic plan. When we look at the Safe Community Priority area, we have four measures, strategic results that are currently on track, and I think you've spent quite a bit of time looking at those, so I'm not going to go over them in detail. But the one that we want to remove, again, had to do with the carry forward of the juveniles referred for probation, receiving that pre-sentence assessment. Again, that is being done, and so we want to make sure that we continue that work in a performance measure to measure our success. But we think it can be removed from the 2020 to 2025 plan. Infrastructure, you can see that all six of the strategic results that reside within the infrastructure priority area are on track and moving forward at this time. Same is true with community and economic development. We have three strategic results, and all three are on track. In vibrant community and neighborhoods, we have four that are on track. And then we list the, the history master plan in the caution status, because we know that there are going to be additional resources needed to really carry forward that plan. So that's why it's sitting at cautionary right now. And then we're asking to remove the strategic result that focuses on the Arvada events, because we know that the philosophy and the direction has changed since we adopted the strategic plan in September of 2019. And then lastly, organizational and service effectiveness. You'll see that four strategic results are on track, and we have one that sits at the caution status. And that is when, looking to obtain a minimum of 4.5 on the five-star community rating. And as you remember, Ben and I presented on the community survey not too long ago, and we said that our results really didn't change too much between 2017 and 2019. And so that's why we will put this in a cautionary status. We want to take a deeper dive into that information and really put together some solid action plans to move forward with this strategic result. And also noting that 4.5 is pretty, is a pretty big leap, and that goes back to our dream in big and deliver. So it's something we want to keep on the books, but it is a goal that we are striving So then, some of the ideas and topics, we wanted to make sure that they addressed the topics that you were looking for. They need more discussion, they need more feedback, and maybe more resources. And so we wanted to bring these to you in workshops in 2020. So you'll see this list, Problem Properties, Plan B for the Water Storage, the Point 04 Trolley, Activation of Historical Assets, again, going to need some resources, Assessment of Community Resources, and Inspire Business Activities in West Arvada. So you'll be seeing these come up on the agenda as workshops as we move through this year. So with that, I'd like to know if you have any questions, particularly, particularly in the 2014 to 19 plan, if you're on board with the recommendations that we're making, and also your big ideas to move those forward as the milestones in the 2020 to 2025 plan.
Okay, council, comments, questions? Mr. Jones?
Just a comment and a question. I'll do the question first. If you could go back to the very first slide identifying kind of the, the 20, 2020 to 20...
14 to 19?
Yes, keep going. Oh, maybe that's the, okay, one more. Yes, that one. By 1222, create a sub-area plan for the northwest Arvada... By 1222, create a sub-area plan for the northwest Arvada focused on placemaking. So I'm just curious what a sub-area plan looks like.
And I will turn that over to Ryan to answer that question.
Sure. With our long-range planning efforts, so we have a long-range planner, and with the implementation of the land development code, one of our goals of implementation of that land development code is going into the different areas and talking to our area stakeholders and understanding what their vision is in the community. And so you can look at it as kind of a micro version of a comprehensive plan, but done at the local scale. So in terms of looking at it for the northwest area, we have always planned on kind of going in and talking to the neighbors in Candellas, in Lyden, in Whisper Creek, and saying, what does the future look like to you? What are the land use patterns that you're interested in? What's the type of commercial development? What's the type of transportation? What's the types of parks and amenities and those types of things? And we put that together, and we, it's an area plan that's focused on that input from the development, from the, from the community members and all those stakeholders. And we use it as a visioning and a guiding document. So as development comes in, we have their voice that helps guide us along. And that's intended to not just be in northwest Arvada, but we're really planning on implementing that in many areas around the city.
No, I thank you. That's helpful because I wanted to make sure that there was the community engagement and community involvement, because my neighbors have really, really good ideas about what's possible or what they're hoping is possible. And so I wanted just to make sure that that gets put on the table as that sub-area plan is developed.
It's the cornerstone is the community engagement.
Thank you. And then my comment, just wanted to thank you and your team for the work that you took us through during our strategic planning retreat, and really compliment the staff, the team, on that. Because you punted really on that day to create a situation where we really could have a productive day and really a productive outcome. So I just really wanted to thank you publicly and appreciate all the hard work that goes into keeping us on track and focused on the right things.
I wouldn't say they punted. I would say they threw a hail mary pass that was caught.
And scored.
And scored. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Absolutely, I wanted to echo Councilmember Jones. You guys did a tremendous job on that strategic plan, one of the best I've ever been through. And just thank you for all your work, to the entire team, everybody. Great job.
Thank you.
Very good. I don't see any other lights. I think you're right on track of where we need to be on this. So thank you for that summary, and that's a recognition of a lot of hard work that's already been done and a lot more hard work in front of us.
Great, thank you for your time tonight.
We're ready for the challenge. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the second public comment portion. Open it up for any City Council reports. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make a quick report. I'm the liaison to the Old Town Arvada Downtown Business Improvement District. And so they met this last week. Some of the most important thing on their agenda was the upcoming St. Patrick's Day Festival that the bid puts on in Old Town. And of course, they're working closely with the city on all the arrangements, the logistics, as far as that goes. One of the things that came up is that they get lots of volunteer support to put that event on. However, they need more. So anyone who would like to volunteer, whether they be sitting here on council or employed by the city, or better yet, residents of the city of Arvada who would like to volunteer at that festival, please get in contact with the Business Improvement District. If you don't know how to do that, call me, and I'll be happy to help refer you. But they could use some volunteers. It's a great way to spend part of a afternoon, and you can attend the festival afterwards. So thank you.
Very good, Mr. Jones?
I just, John just reminded me of something that my wife wanted me to make sure to tell the Business Improvement District. All of the lights on the trees that are going through Old Town, it's so awesome that they're still up and lit. And I don't know what the plan is long-term, if that is to leave those lit year-round, but I think it's a great, kind of cool amenity, especially when you're down there on a weeknight and a weekend. So if you can just give that feedback to the bid and let them know that I think residents really enjoy having it lit up.
Sounds good. I'll pass that on. I believe that's the City Parks Department who does that, makes that decision, but I think it's a good subject to talk about, for sure.
If I'm not mistaken, the lights come down in March, but I actually second, I would love to see them up year-round, if that's possible.
Mr. Rusik, please.
Yes, please.
We've actually extended the time that they're on longer and longer based on feedback like that. But the decisions really made with the Business Improvement District, the business community, to support an atmosphere for positive economic development. So we'll definitely keep them up.
Very good. Mr. Devon?
No reports, Mr. Mayor, in council.
Thank you. Ms. Morris, anything from the City Attorney's Office?
No, Your Honor.
Very good. We stand adjourned.
Thank you, Christine.